From Kern Government Television, welcome to this week's Kern County Board of Supervisors meeting, originating from the County Administrative Center located at 1115 Truxton Avenue, Bakersfield, California. Kern County's vision is to create and maintain a customer-centered county government designed to garner the confidence, support, and trust of the people we serve. Today's Kern County Board of Supervisors meeting will convene momentarily.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Supervisor Peters?
Here.
Supervisor Scrivner?
Here.
Supervisor Maggert?
Here.
Supervisor Couch?
Here.
And Supervisor Perez?
Here. Can you hear me, Kathy?
Yes, we can. Thank you so much.
Good morning, and welcome to the Tuesday, February 9th, 2021, meeting of the Kern County Board of Supervisors. We'll begin today's meeting with a flag salute led by Supervisor Scrivner. Following the pledge of allegiance, please remain standing for a moment of prayer, silence, or meditation, whichever you prefer.
Stand. Salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which sustains, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, I would like to call on Nick Cohen, Director of the Animal Services Department, to introduce this week's Pet of the Week.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We're gonna make this a quick one.
Who do we have here today, Nick?
We have Timmy. Timmy's about a four-month-old domestic shorthair. He's a little boy, a little kitten. He's very rambunctious. Our Director of Public Health had me watch a YouTube video of a cat freaking out on camera, so that's playing in my head right now. He's available for adoption right now. He's been in foster care since he was just an itty-bitty kitten, and he's available right now. He's a sweet boy.
Oh, man. Well, hopefully, we could find somebody today that'll give him a new home.
I have a feeling he might not leave the building.
Right.
Somebody might adopt him in the building, from what I understand.
And how old did you say he is?
He's about four months old.
About four months old.
Yeah.
That's awesome. Well, thanks for bringing him down today, Nick.
Thank you.
The County of Kern has provided notice that as a result of the declared federal, state, and local emergencies due to the COVID-19 pandemic, and in light of the Governor's orders, this Board of Supervisors meeting is not physically open to the public. Testimony and general public comment are accepted via email or voice message to the Clerk of the Board prior to today's meeting, and live comments via teleconference will be heard during the meeting. We will begin by considering the consent agenda. All items listed with a CA above the item are considered to be routine and non-controversial by county staff. Consent items will be considered first and may be approved by one motion. If a member of the public wishes to comment or ask questions regarding an item on the consent agenda, then may do so prior to the vote being taken. A member of the Board may remove any item from the consent agenda, and it will be considered in listed sequence with an opportunity for any member of the public to address the Board concerning the item before action is taken. A member of the public may also comment on any closed-session item. At this time, I will read the consent agenda item numbers. That is items 1 through 9 on Page 2, 12 through 17 on Page 3, 18 through 25 on Page 4, 28 through 32 on Page 5, 33 through 40 on Page 6, 41 through 47 on Page 7, and 48 through 54 on Page 8. Madam Clerk, is there any member of the public wishing to comment on the consent agenda?
No, Mr. Chairman. No members of the public.
Okay. Are there any members of the Board that would like any items removed for discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll move approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion, a second. Madam Clerk, may I have a roll call vote?
Supervisor Peters?
Aye.
Supervisor Scrivner?
Aye.
Supervisor Maggert?
Aye.
Supervisor Couch?
Yes.
Supervisor Perez?
Yeah.
Thank you. The motion is approved. All ayes.
Great. Okay, we will now consider the first item off consent, which is Board Item Number 10, Public Presentations. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons to address the Board on any matter not on this agenda, but under the jurisdiction of the Board. Board members may respond briefly to statements made or questions posed. They may ask a question for clarification, make a referral to staff for factual information, or request staff to report back to the Board at a later meeting date. Also, the Board may take action to direct the staff to place a matter of business on a future agenda. Speakers are limited to two minutes. Please state and spell your name before making your presentation.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, we do not have any members of the public wishing to provide comments under public presentations, either via voice message, email, or telephonically.
Okay. Thank you. Next, we will consider Item Number 11, Board Member Announcements or Reports Will Now Be Heard. Any Supervisors wishing to make an announcement? Okay, I would just like to say that last Wednesday, our Clerk of the Board's office lost another seasoned member of the team, and I would like to acknowledge the service of Melody Nature, who has served as the Assessment Appeals Board Clerk for the past 14 years. Melody patiently and calmly served the public, assisting property owners in navigating the property tax assessment appeals filing process. She was also extremely dedicated to providing quality administrative assistance to the Assessment Appeals Board. We are all deeply saddened by the loss of Melody, and this Board extends its sincere condolences to her husband, Ryan, or, excuse me, her husband, Dan, and their two sons, Brandon and Ryan. Our thoughts and prayers are with the Nature family during this difficult time. I would ask that we adjourn today's meeting in the memory of Melody Nature. I would also like to announce that my grandmother, Olly Vanita Peters, passed away last week, and she was a former member of the Kern County Social Services Department, as well as a special education teacher, and she passed away as a result of COVID-19 complications last week at 86 years old, so I'd like to adjourn today as well in her memory. Okay, next, I would like to ask Bryn Kerrigan, Director of Public Health Services, to provide a COVID-19 pandemic update.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the Board.
Good morning.
Today, we're announcing 665 new cases, bringing the total cases in Kern County to 98,187. We're also announcing one additional death, bringing our total deaths to 660. I'd like to talk a little bit about the fairgrounds first up this morning. I can honestly say I've never been more proud to be a county employee. When we all pull together, we're capable of great things. Over the past two weeks, the county's Emergency Operations Center has been coordinating the expansion of the fairgrounds' mass vaccination site. The Public Works Department has completed paving and stripping of the area for the drive-through component to the fairgrounds, and staff from various county departments show up every day with a smile on their face, ready to help our residents get vaccinated. It's truly an incredible experience. The week of January 18th, we had a goal of issuing 1,200 vaccines. We actually administered 1,545. The week of January 25th, we had a goal of 2,000 vaccinations. We actually vaccinated 2,036 people. Last week, we had a goal of another 2,000 vaccinations. We actually vaccinated 1,936 people. This week, we are beginning to provide second doses from the first week of our operations. Approximately half of our total goal of 2,400 vaccinations are allocated for second doses. Kern County was included in the first wave of the onboarding of the state's vaccination system called MyTurn. In our initial discussions with the state, we anticipated going live with this software this week. However, we have not been given access to the production version as of yet. We are now aiming to go live with the software next week. The software will be instrumental in efficiently scheduling appointments for the fairgrounds' operations. The initial scheduling with this software will also include scheduling of second doses. As we reported to your Board at the last meeting, the state lifted the regional stay-at-home order, effective January 24th, 2021. As counties exited the regional stay-at-home order, they were assigned their blueprint for a safer economy tier. Kern was placed in the purple tier. As of January 26th, Kern's testing rate was 433.1 per 100,000 residents, and as of today, the state will announce our testing rate is 331.2 per 100,000 residents. Our unadjusted case rate two weeks ago was 63.1 per 100,000 residents, and as of today, the state will announce that our unadjusted case rate is 31.2 per 100,000 residents. Our adjusted case rate two weeks ago was 63.9 per 100,000 residents, and today, the state will announce that it's 35.1 per 100,000 residents. And as a reminder, we need to get to 7 per 100,000 residents in order to move into that red tier. Our testing positivity rate two weeks ago was 18.7%, and as of today, the state will announce that our testing positivity rate has decreased to 12.5%. And a reminder, we need to get to 8% to get to that red tier. Our health equity, or our lowest quartile, testing positivity rate two weeks ago was 23.7%, and as of today, the state will announce that that has gone down to 16.8%. Again, we need to get to 8% to get in that red tier. We know that the case rate is going down, and our cases are decreasing. We think we are on the tail end of the winter surge, but now is not the time to let our guards down. We're making progress, and we need to continue our efforts, and we need to get back to that red tier. On Saturday, February 6th, the state modified the guidance related to worship services in response to a Supreme Court decision. The changes allow indoor worship services to occur at 25% capacity within the purple tier. Previously, there was a cap on indoor capacity of 25% or 100 people, whichever is fewer. However, the reference to the 100-person cap has also been removed. School reopening is no longer tied to the blueprint tier for a safer economy. A majority of Kern County schools already met the criteria to reopen for in-person instruction because they reopened while we were in the red tier. For the few that have not, they can reopen when our adjusted case rate is 25 per 100,000 people or less for at least five consecutive days. For junior high and high school, they cannot reopen until we are in the red tier. Youth sports are open for play with restrictions. Youth sports are limited to between two teams. If one team is from out of the county, that county must be in the same tier as our county. Youth sports are limited to the type of sports allowable in the purple tier or similar low-contact sports. As of February 7th, 2021, Kern County's hospital system had 579 available regular hospital beds and 38 available ICU beds. We had 262 patients currently hospitalized with COVID-19 and 59 patients currently in the ICU with COVID-19. Kern's adjusted ICU capacity is 13.7%, and Kern's unadjusted ICU capacity is at 15%. At the highest point, which was January 11th, 2021, there were 444 patients hospitalized with COVID-19 in Kern County, with 110 patients in the ICU with COVID-19. While the rate of hospitalizations has decreased, our hospitals are still under pressure from this recent surge. Our actions remain extremely important to prevent another spike in cases which will result in another surge on an already strained system. We continue to meet weekly with hospital CEOs and maintain the county's alternative care site to deploy should our hospital system become overwhelmed. On Friday, February 5th, we were able to update the death data dashboard. The data is reviewed every other week to determine if we have met the criteria for release as set forth by our HIPAA statistician. While even as of Friday, we did not meet the criteria, since only one category was holding us back from releasing the updated data, we combined the Asian race and ethnicity category with the other category, which did permit the release of the information. The key findings from our updated death data include that our 65 and older residents continue to be the most affected age group, accounting for 67.5% of all of our COVID-19 deaths. We have seen no deaths associated with COVID-19 in our children 18 and under. Only 17 of the detailed 658 deaths had known underlying health conditions. The most common comorbidities are hypertension and diabetes. Our Hispanic population seems to be disproportionately impacted, accounting for 60.2% of our COVID-19 deaths, but only accounting for 52.6% of our population. Males also seem to be disproportionately impacted, accounting for 60.2% of our COVID-19 deaths, but only accounting for 50.8% of our population. As of February 4th, 2021, the county had received 72,900 doses of the COVID-19 vaccine. According to the state's dashboard, as of this morning, 64,334 Kern County residents have been vaccinated. It is important to note that this is not the total number of vaccines administered in Kern County, that this is solely the number of residents vaccinated, and we know this number is understated because almost 2,000 doses that Kern County Public Health has administered are missing from the state's data. We continue to work with them to correct these data issues. On January 13th, 2021, the Governor announced that individuals 65 years and older are eligible to receive the COVID-19 vaccine, in addition to those in Phase 1A of the vaccine schedule. Kern County immediately added this group to the eligible populations. The state also has an allocation guideline on their website that directed counties to prioritize vaccinating healthcare workers and those who are 65 and older, and when demand subsides in these groups, to move on to other priority groups. This direction is buried within their website and appears contradictory to the vaccination page at the state level that indicates that all of those groups in Phase 1B, which includes agriculture workers, educators, emergency services, food service workers, and childcare workers are currently eligible for vaccination. This contradictory information has led to confusion statewide. We continue to ask the state for clear, concise direction on eligibility. Furthermore, on February 4th, 2021, the state released another allocation guideline specifying that, based on available supply, individuals described below are or will be eligible for COVID-19 vaccines. Healthcare workers, Phase 1B Tier 1, which is person 65 of age and older, and sector populations, including education, childcare, emergency services, and food and agriculture workers. The guidance continues to state that these priority groups will be eligible based on supply. In Kern, there are an estimated 146,000 people who are in Phase 1A or who are 65 years of age or older. While some other counties may have moved on to include other priority populations in their eligibility groups, Kern County has only received enough vaccine to cover a small portion of the existing priority populations. We are anxious to vaccinate our educators, our agriculture workers, and everyone else in our community. Unfortunately, the supply is just not there. Eight out of 10 COVID-19 deaths reported in the U.S. are adults 65 and older, and this population is at significantly higher risk of hospitalization and death than the younger age groups. Kern is poised with an outpouring of community providers begging for vaccine allocation to vaccinate our community. We continue to advocate through all means possible for more vaccine, and are hopeful our allotment will increase soon. Kern County will be adding additional priority populations to the eligible groups as vaccine supply and demand in existing eligible groups allows. Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, this concludes my comments.
Thank you very much. Any Supervisors have any questions for Ms. Kerrigan? Supervisor Couch?
Bryn, do we still need, I assume we do, convalescent plasma?
Yes, we still do.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Supervisor Maggert?
Thank you. Ms. Kerrigan, thank you for your report to us this morning. I wanted to just emphasize one part that has a lot to do with frustration in the community, and that is how we are prioritizing who gets the vaccines. So, the messages from the Governor's office cause confusion, and they are causing confusion because we are not receiving adequate supplies of the vaccine to give to people. So while he may say that, you know, go ahead and teachers and ag workers and first responders, go ahead and make your appointments, the reality is, as you indicated, but I just want to reemphasize this, the reality is that eight of 10 deaths are occurring in people 65 and older. So it would, we have concluded, and I have concluded, and I urge us to continue to stay the course in this way, that to vaccinate those that are outside of the 65 and older category is to doom someone in that category to death, and that's just completely unacceptable to me. So until we get more vaccine supply from the state so that we can administer more shots, I think we have to stay the course and vaccinate those that are 65 and older. Less than 25% of that population has been vaccinated so far, and they represent over 80% of the deaths that are occurring in that category, as I said. So it's just, I know it's frustrating to teachers and first responders and people that work in agriculture, but the reality is, we must protect those who have the most imminent risk of death, so I hope that we can do that. I also want to just urge, I tried to speak directly to you in a feeble way last time we met, to the Governor, but in the same vein, we must have more vaccines. We now have the ability, and please confirm if, or correct me if I'm incorrect, but we have the ability to deliver throughout Kern County about 45,000 doses a month, 35,000 of them just at our fairgrounds, but we are only receiving from the state between 6,000 and 8,000 doses. That is woefully short, and as soon as we get more vaccine, we will push the doors wide open to get as many people in there as we can. We have great ability to do that, but we are desperately waiting for more of those vaccines. So is there anything you would like to say to correct or expand on that?
Supervisor Maggert through the chair, I'd just like to say that I believe that that is per week and not per month.
Per week?
Yes.
45,000 per week?
Yes.
Right, and we're only getting 6,000 to 8,000 shots available to give per week, so look at the disparity. So I hope that we can get that sooner, and I implore those who the Governor's told that they can call to make their appointment, please be patient. We're trying to take care of those that have a much greater risk of death, and if there's some special circumstance, then they should make us aware of that, you know, as they call to try to set an appointment. But, okay, thank you very much, and I just want to say one more time, I'm so grateful to the monumental effort that's gone into this. Every department in the county is focused on one thing. They have multiple responsibilities, but there is one common goal amongst all of them, and that is how we best protect our public. And I just have so much admiration for the great job that's been done to get our distribution system up and going as it is. So thank you very much. Supervisor, through the chair, Supervisor Scrivner.
Thank you, Supervisor Maggert and Mr. Chairman. Ms. Kerrigan, thank you so much for your report. I just wanted to weigh in a little bit more on the prioritization of vaccines. I'm totally in support of us prioritizing those folks that are 65 and older. There's obviously, I think, two big reasons. A, that... A, that, that is the group that is most at risk for adverse effects from COVID. That's the group that is most likely, um, unfortunately, to perish from the disease. It also is the group that's most likely to inundate our hospitals. And so if our priority is to reduce the death rate and reduce the number of hospitalizations, which we all know is our goal, then that is the group that should be prioritized. I understand that teachers want to be vaccinated, frontline workers, et cetera, first responders, but there are folks that have been, um, at work this whole time. There are folks that have been in, in several different industries that are essential, et cetera. They have been working without a vaccine, um, and we want to get, we want to get those folks vaccinated as quickly as possible, but with the current supply chain that we have, we need to prioritize those folks that are most vulnerable, and those are the folks that are sixty-five and older. And so I support that. If any members of the board, um, have any, you know, any, uh, issues with that or any other suggestions, of course, we're open to that, but Supervisor Maggard and I, as members of the ad hoc committee, along with CAO Alsop, yourself, and Matt Constantine, um, we are all in lockstep that that is where we should be prioritizing the supply chain right now. And so, Mr. Chairman, thank you for your time. Supervisor Maggard, thank you for your, for your comments.
Thank you Supervisor Scrivner. Uh, Ms. Kerrigan, just out of curiosity, did you say we had received or administered about seventy-two-thousand doses so far?
Mr. Chairman, we've received seventy-two-thousand-nine-hundred doses as of last week, um, and according to the state's vaccination dashboard, they only show the number of Kern County residents that have been vaccinated. That number was sixty-four-thousand-three-hundred-and-thirty-four.
Okay. And just out of curiosity, is that strictly public health numbers, or does that include private clinics that are administering vaccines as well?
That includes private clinics as well.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Supervisor Perez, did you have any comments or anything to add?
Uh, thank you so much, Chairman. Uh, I'm in agreement that our priority should be with our most vulnerable, and that would be sixty-five plus. I think it's also simple and streamlined and makes sense, uh, in a lot of ways, so I appreciate the leadership of Supervisors Maggard and Scrivner, and of course, Bryn's excellent leadership. Uh, again, congratulations to your post, uh, we look forward to you continuing to lead us through these challenging times, but our most vulnerable people are, uh, you know, need to be cared for and protected in an unprecedented way, so thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Perez. Okay, um, is, is there any other questions or comments for Ms. Kerrigan from the board? Okay, thank you, Ms. Kerrigan. Okay, next we will consider item number twenty-six under the county administrative office, and that is the mid-year status report for fiscal year twenty-twenty through twenty-twenty-one budget for general and fire funds. Mr. Alsop?
Yes, sir. Uh, good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Um, this, this morning, my office is providing you an update on the mid-year status of revenues, appropriations, and reserves and designations for the current fiscal year's budget, and before, we have our CFO, Ms. Martinez, and I know that, uh, Mr. Zerfus, our Chief Operations Officer, uh, will also be providing, uh, some comment, um, along with, with Elsa. Before that, uh, wanted to, uh, provide you with, uh, some, uh, some highlights, overall revenue estimates, uh, for the current year trending above projected revenue estimates, uh, in your board's adopted budget for the current fiscal year, uh, which is welcome news. However, the county remains in an extraordinary time of uncertainty and must continue to be prudent in planning, uh, for any potential unforeseen changes in revenue as we approach the end of the current fiscal year, and as we contemplate development of next year's budget that will be fiscal year twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two. General fund discretionary revenue is currently forecast to exceed our budget estimates overall by about three-and-a-half percent. These mid-year estimates are attributable, attributable to a significant one-time payment in fiscal year twenty-nineteen, twenty, property taxes by California Resources Corporation, better-than-expected vehicle license fees in lieu of property tax, better-than-expected sales, uh, use, and transit, uh, transient occupancy tax-related revenues, along with other revenues, to include interest earnings on existing cash balances due to higher interest rates than anticipated, along with a one-time payment related to a class action suit that was also not anticipated. As you're aware, this is, uh, this year more than ever, uh, the uncertainty caused by the COVID-19 pandemic has made predicting future revenue and expenditures even more difficult than it already was, um, but we must continue to be prepared, um, in that vein to, to adapt to any unforeseen changes or circumstances. Uh, to that end, the CAO has prepared a budget contingency plan, uh, that could be implemented at any point where current year revenues fall below budgeted estimates. This plan has been developed to mitigate up to a twenty-seven-million-dollar loss in current year revenue if needed, uh, through a balanced approach of strategically using reserves and other budget reductions across our enterprise. Although this revenue loss mitigation plan was developed to utilize largely one-time budget solutions and will not solve a structural budget deficit, in the event it is implemented, it will preserve the county's current fiscal position until economic visibility is made more clear and longer-term sustainable financial planning can be implemented if needed. Given current revenue projections, my office is not recommending implementation of any aspect of that contingency plan at this time. Some notes on continuing your board's, uh, strong support for critical, uh, the critical recruitment and retention efforts at the Sheriff's Department. The current fiscal year's budget continues, uh, to support efforts to address recruitment and retention challenges within the Sheriff's Department. Current fiscal year's budget provides the fifth year of funding for a sheriff's deputy training academy, provided to mitigate the impacts of attrition on frontline sworn staff and the residents that those staff serve. Uh, the department is currently planning to begin an academy on March twenty-second of this year to backfill up to twenty current vacancies paid for through your board's adopted set aside of one-point-three-two-five million in appropriations for contingencies this year. Also part of this current budget, the board set aside two-million dollars in designations to provide recruitment bonuses for sworn positions. Uh, the department also continues recruitment efforts for detention, uh, deputy ranks. The current detention, uh, deputy academy, which began November seven, uh, of last year, uh, plans to graduate fourteen, uh, detention deputies later this month, unless that number has changed since, since, uh, receiving the information. A couple of final thoughts on your board's commitment to maintaining fire operations and, uh, continuing to rebuild our, our county's fire fund much stronger. Uh, while the department, uh, operations are being maintained, uh, the fire department has been challenged, uh, due to the impacts of COVID-19 in its ranks, along with unfilled firefighter vacancies, uh, in, in addition to attrition. Firefighter Academy is currently in progress with thirty-four participants, which will more than fill all vacant and funded operational fire positions. Uh, the current fiscal year's budget maintains fire operations, uh, by using six-and-a-half million dollars in reserves to fill a fiscal deficit caused by stagnant growth in property tax revenue and the ever-increasing costs of providing fire protection such as employee costs and the need for repair and replacement of critical facilities and apparatus. Uh, in an effort to bring an additional fiscal stability to the fire fund and address its deficit, uh, your board put into the current year budget, uh, an ongoing and permanent additional, uh, four-million dollars in operational funding, uh, which has been applied, uh, in this current budget and is ongoing in perpetuity, uh, going forward. Current year budget also provides ten-million dollars in additional funding for the purchase of new firefighting equipment, engines, and other emergency vehicles, the majority of which will be delivered next fiscal year. This is the largest investment, uh, that a county board of supervisors has made in fire equipment in over a decade, uh, and it has been, uh, critical, and I know the chief is appreciative of, of that. And with that, I'm going to ask Ms. Martinez of our office to provide, uh, some more detail on this item.
Good morning, Ms. Martinez.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. I just want to give you some high-level highlights of the numbers and provide some additional comments to Mr. Alsop already, narrative, so if you... So this report provides the status of the general fund at the midpoint of the fiscal year. The county budget for the general fund is, as Mr. Alsop indicated, is tracking as amended. General fund departments have spent about forty-six-point-eight percent of their budgeted appropriations, which is about one-point-eight percent higher than last year during the same period. This increase is mainly the result of additional costs incurred for, um, related to the pandemic. We are reimbursing departments from the care's funding for that additional cost. Departments submitted their mid-year reports to our office, and all departments indicate that most, they are tracking as budgeted, including those departments that budgeted to use, um, budget sent, savings incentives. As Mr. Alsop indicated, we are seeing an increase in property tax collections of about nine-point-six million related to a one-time payment. The fire department, as you can see, is also benefiting of, from that increase, but I want to point to your board, um, that our projected, our estimated, um, forecast for the general fund discretionary revenue is still lower than our last year actual by about one-point-seven, one-point-seven million. What we're seeing is that the decrease that we anticipated is not as deep as we originally thought due to that one-time payment that we're getting. Uh, the, the bottom line of that table in front of you is inclusive fire fund, property tax. Our actual last fiscal year was a one-on-one million. We budgeted a, uh, one-on-five, which included the four-million transfer that your board authorized. We are projecting a hundred-and-eight million, um, with an increase of three million. That additional three million is going to be instrumental for the fire fund for operations that will be back in front of your board requesting to appropriate this revenue to cover operation, including the, um, academy that Mr. Alsop just mentioned. The next, the next revenue that we keep track very closely is our Proposition One-seventy-two, our public safety funding. This type of revenue represents a major funding source for the general fund and not general fund, especially our, uh, public safety departments. Most departments are benef, benefited from an increase, and as you can see on the table, that revenue has been decreasing over the last few years. Our adopted budget included seventy, um, seventy-four-point-six million, and we are projected to be slightly above what we anticipated. Realignment revenue has become a major funding source for our county. The state realigned many programs to the counties and provided sales tax and vehicle license fees. If you may recall, we were in front of your board with the adopted budget, seeing a significant reductions as we saw the impacts of the stay-at-home orders across the state. What the state did is they backfilled with state general fund, all counties, including Kern County, and this revenue has been instrumental in keeping the services across all our departments that benefit from this revenue. At the beginning of the fiscal year, reserve and designation totaled one-seventy-five-point-eight million. As noted on page six of this report, there have been releases from these designations for, um, cleanup and demolition across the county, for payment of, of recruitment incentives to, for sheriff deputies, and then payments to the Department of Healthcare Services related to the operation of Kern Medical prior to the transfer to the hospital authority. Your board has also used a small amount for improvements in the Oildale area and the Lost Hills. As you can see, your board has prudently set aside designations and reserve for specific purposes. The county has used reserve to mitigate the retirement cost increases in the past few years, and we again anticipate that we will need to use that designation to mitigate the expected increase for next fiscal year. So I'm going to stop at this time to see if your board have any specific questions before we move to the fiscal preparedness, um, plan.
Okay. Are there any questions for Ms. Martinez?
No.
Ed?
Our office have prepared, um, a plan. As Mr. Alsop indicated, this plan is ready to be implemented. We are not recommending any budget cuts at this point. We are ju, we have just prepared this plan to put us in a position that if, if revenues, uh, reductions materialize from this point forward, then we could implement the plan. If, if you may recall, last year I was standing in front of you with revenue projections that looked good, and, and the stay-at-home order hit, and, and we found ourselves rushing to come out with a plan to, to decide what to do. This plan will put us in a position that we will, your board, the public, and our employees will know what, what the expectations are. Mr. Service is going to walk you through this plan.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez. Good morning, Mr. Zerfus.
Good morning, Chairman Peterson, members of the board. As you've heard a couple times from Mr. Alsop and Ms. Martinez, the budget contingency plan is really developed as a short-term stopgap measure. It is, uh, it is in, it is developed to be able to, uh, be implemented quickly if we see, um, revenues in the general fund, Prop One-seventy-two, and realignment revenues come in lower than anticipated. And, and this year, it's particularly important, um, because of, of the, uh, just the, the impact of the pandemic, which has made, uh, projecting revenues difficult, uh, more so this year than, than ever before, uh, and, and really oil prices and the oil environment as well, as that plays a, a primary factor, uh, in our county. Uh, so this is not a long-term financial, um, strategy to balance the budget. This is a short-term stopgap measure to allow us time to then implement a longer-term financial strategy to maintain a balanced budget in future, in future years. Uh, this would simply be able to preserve our resources, uh, and, and keep us from having to make more drastic reductions in future fiscal years, uh, if we weren't able to act swiftly, uh, in this current year. So the CAO has developed an eleven-step, um, multi, or eleven-step budget contingency plan, uh, which could be implemented to save five percent, uh, of these revenue categories, or twenty-seven-point-three-eight million. Uh, they are designed sequentially, so, and, and to be implemented as such. So if, at any point, um, th, this plan is being monitored on a monthly basis based on actuals, uh, this mid-year report is the first one of these reports to your board will be coming back, uh, in future months with updates, and at each point, uh, we are looking to see if, if we've exceeded a one percent projected shortfall in revenue sources. Uh, if so, then, then we would look to implement, uh, from the top down, one through eleven in, in these different categories. Uh, the, these are strategic, um, they are balanced to include a, um, a balanced solution of, of spending down reserves. Uh, you'll see the first item, number one, is, is simply the appropriation for contingencies. That's money already in your budget, set aside for contingencies. Uh, we then move into, um, a shift from realignment, which is allowed, uh, and we get into various designations, um, and, and, uh, and set asides, uh, which, which make up most of these categories. In fact, fifty-two percent, uh, of the proposed solutions here rely on, on using, uh, fund-balanced designations in order to, uh, in order to bridge this gap. In addition to that, uh, there are operational cuts. There is, uh, step nine is a, uh, five, or half a percent reduction in net general fund contribution, um, and that's to all departments, so we'd be asking all departments, uh, to participate in shaving their budgets down even further, uh, which, which is, will be proved to be difficult, um, being so late in the fiscal year and the, the, uh, budget reductions that they've already taken this year. So although half a percentage point may not sound like a lot, it has a big impact on, on departments. Step, uh, and, and in conjunction with the use of designations and operational reductions, uh, we also, uh, we also do have, uh, some capital projects that would be deferred in order to preserve that cash, uh, and there is a, a proposed, um, uh, furlough, a one-day per month furlough that's a part of this plan, and, and that comes in, uh, down on step ten. So it is the second to the last step in this plan. Uh, as Mr. Alsop and Ms. Martinez have both commented, uh, based on the mid-year results, uh, we don't anticipate implementing any of these steps in, in the plan. It's simply our due diligence in being responsible managers to make sure that you have a plan to implement, uh, if, if need be. Based on the, based on the mid-year report, uh, these categories of general fund, Prop One-seventy-two, and realignment, uh, revenues, uh, which, uh, total five-hundred-and-forty-seven million dollars, uh, the projected, uh, year-end, uh, balance for those is five-hundred-and-sixty-nine million, which is about four percent over, uh, what was originally budgeted. Uh, so, uh, at this point, we don't foresee having to implement this plan. Uh, we will be back before your board on March ninth to present January and February actual results and take another look at this and make sure we're on track. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Services. Is there any, uh, questions or comments from the board? Supervisor Scrivner?
Thank you, Ms.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to, want to thank our CAO staff for being so proactive and creating this plan in preparation for what may happen, but we're all hopeful that we don't have to implement any of these steps. But I just, I think that the, the degree of planning and foresight and responsibility that our staff has demonstrated with coming up, coming up with this is commendable. So thank you so much, Mr. Service and Mr. Alsop.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Service. I appreciate it. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Maggard, I didn't see Buzz in there.
No problem. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to thank staff as well, to reiterate what Supervisor Scrivener just said, for being prudent and thinking ahead about these things. We've done this before with other matters, particularly with regard to the Fire Department, and I just want to assure the public and our employees that before any of these things, any of these changes would be made, it would come back to us. We'd have an opportunity to have a robust public discussion about it, and it would require another vote of this board to implement any of these changes. So, but it would be reckless and imprudent of us not to prepare for the worst, as we hope for the best, or at least hope for something better than, than the worst-case scenario. And it looks like that's coming to fruition. But it's always prudent to plan, and as a good accountant, we've got to make sure we are preparing for the worst. So I commend staff for doing that, and thank you very much.
Agreed. It's like that old saying, failing to prepare, you prepare to fail. So thank you guys for staying on top of this and all your hard work on this. Okay, next, we're going to go to item number 27 under the CAO's office.
We, I think we need a motion to receive and file, Mr. Chairman. Is that correct, Madam Clerk?
Oh, I apologize. I skipped over that.
We're not quite done. I do want to let you know, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, we do not have any public comment regarding this item.
Other than Craig Pope.
Oh, Mr. Pope.
We do have public comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Craig Pope, Public Works Director. I do want to speak to this item, and that simply is on the constraints placed on departments for hiring and promotion of their employees. We are, we have been, Public Works has been out there this entire year working with COVID. We've been keeping the roads open. We've been plowing snow. We've been keeping the signals going. We're keeping the landfills going, but we're not able to hire as fast as we need to be. We're not able to promote, and that has long-term consequences to this department and to the county. I've been through this before, where for a long time we weren't allowed to hire. What that does is it forms gaps in your organization where people, you have people at the bottom, you have people at the top, but the people at the top leave, and then all of a sudden you have this big gap of people that don't have the experience they need to fill the upper echelon. And that's what we're starting to see already. It's already happening to our department. It's happening to all the departments. We need to be able to continue to promote. We need to be able to continue to hire if you want us to do our job. If there are pieces of our job that you don't want us to do, please let me know. We'll trim them out because we are under obligation from the public and from you to keep doing our job. We can't unless we're able to hire, unless we're able to promote. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Scrivener.
Mr. Pope, thank you for your comments. You know, we've, we've had conversations between you and I and Mr. Alsop in regard to this issue with your department. And so, Mr. Alsop, I would ask you if you'd like to respond to those comments, and how are those discussions proceeding as far as some of Mr. Pope's specific needs in regard to road maintenance? It's winter. We've got snow issues up in the Frazier Park area and other parts of the county. And so I know he has some challenges when it comes to hiring heavy, heavy equipment operators, but where, where does that stand and, and, you know, how is that impacting his ability to do what we need him to do for our constituents?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Scrivener, the last conversation that I had with Mr. Pope was with you on that, and I thought that we had, I thought that we had sent the message that we would work with him to provide him with what he needs, and I have not received any phone calls back from Mr. Pope on this subject since that meeting.
Well, I'd say you two to get together because I'm a little surprised to have him stand up here and, and express concerns when I thought that we had this ironed out. And so I would ask for you two to get together and let me and other members of the board that may be interested in, in how this is proceeding, give us a status update on that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Scrivener. Are there any other comments? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to receive and file.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Madam Clerk, can we have a roll call vote?
Yes. Supervisor Peters?
Aye.
Supervisor Scrivener?
Aye.
Supervisor Maggard?
Aye.
Supervisor Couch?
Yes.
Supervisor Perez?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries all ayes.
Thank you. Okay, now we'll go to item number 27 under the CAO's office, and that is the Proposed Agreement with Adventist Health for Provision and Administration of COVID-19 Vaccinations Throughout the County Using a Mobile Vaccination Clinic from February 9, 2021 through May 31.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to recuse myself on this item. My wife is employed by Adventist Health, and so I'm going to step away from the dais. I'll be back after this item. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Jim Zerfus of my office was going to handle this, but he's out trying to figure out how we can help Mr. Pope out in the lobby. So I'm going to handle this. This item is a $300, or $300,000 contract that we are recommending that we sign with Adventist Health to hatchet fee. There are two important aspects to this particular agreement with Adventist Health. The first is providing a needed mobile clinic effort to provide hundreds of additional vaccines each week to populations, initially to populations in the East Kern area. These are communities like Boron, like Cal City, Mojave, Rosamond, et cetera, and everywhere in between, a lot of rural area. This agreement would allow for the administration of 80 additional doses a day of vaccine, seven days a week. And when you do the math, that is a tremendous number of vaccines that will be distributed. The other great flexibility in this is that this particular agreement provides for this mobile clinic to service all other areas of the county as needed, while an initial effort is going to be made out in the rural areas of East Kern. So there's great flexibility with this particular effort. Really, the second, the feature, and probably the most important feature in my mind, is that this agreement actually increases the number of doses that we have available to us to distribute to residents here in Kern. This is not part of the pool of supply that we receive directly from the state, which, as Ms. Kerrigan discussed earlier, is extremely limited by the thousands a day. We could be doing thousands or more a day if we had the supply. Tapping into an agreement with Adventist Health to hatchet fee allows them, they are a multi, what's known as a multi-county agency, so they have facilities and organizations, not just in Kern, but in many counties across the state. They receive their own direct supply from the state, and they are bringing that supply to bear in this agreement with the county. So they're actually adding in this area to our, to our available supply. So two important aspects to the agreement. We are bringing this before your board to approve, and that's, I think that's all we have on it, unless I'm missing anything, Ms. Martinez, that you can think of. I'm sure Mr. Zerfus will be back in, in case I've missed anything, but that's the proposal before your board and the recommendation today.
Thank you, Mr. Alsop. Supervisor Maggard, did you have something you would like to share?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. I just want to express my hearty and heartfelt support for this idea. The, I know that the allocation of and the sources of vaccination, vaccines is beyond the notice of most people, but the, what Mr. Alsop just explained is the second benefit and even the better benefit of this is that this introduces 80 vaccinations a day, seven days a week is 560 for a week, times an average of four weeks a month, it's actually a little bit more usually, that's over 2,200 additional vaccinations we would not otherwise have. And that is clearly a third of what we're receiving for our entire county allocation right now. Let's hope that that improves. But in any event, 2,200 people a month more being able to be vaccinated is a tremendous gain for us. So I want to thank Adventist Health for their, their help with this, and I want to assure that those that live in East Kern, particularly in those rural areas, that this board is concerned about you. We want to make sure that you're provided for, and this is a great way to deliver these vaccinations almost to your doorstep. So I heartily support the, the effort and would be glad to motion approval.
Thank you, Supervisor Maggard. Are there any other comments?
One second.
Okay. And before we go to the vote, I just wanted to say as well that I really would like to echo what Supervisor Maggard was saying. I think this is a tremendous effort. I know that there's a lot of concern from some communities in Eastern Kern. They're a little more remote about access to vaccines, and I think this is going to be a critical component to making sure that they receive that. So thank you very much for bringing this to us today. But we have a motion and a second, so Madam Clerk, can we have a roll call vote?
Mr. Chairman, I did want to let you know that we do not have any public comment on this item before we go to the roll call vote. So, Mr. Peters?
Aye.
Supervisor Scrivener has abstained. Supervisor Maggard?
Aye.
Supervisor Couch?
Yes.
And Supervisor Perez?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries four ayes, one abstention. Supervisor Scrivener.
Okay, thank you. Can we wait for, or should we wait for Supervisor Scrivener to adjourn, or we could probably just go ahead and do it?
It's, it's not necessary.
Okay. Well, having no more items to consider, an open session, I will entertain a motion to adjourn to consider item number 55 under County Administrative Office, Public Employee Performance Evaluation.
Subtle.
Okay. Well, without objection, we are adjourned in memory of Melody Nature and Ollie Peters.